The first, 2021.
This conference will now be recorded.
This is a public service announcement. The city council will meet today with all voting members of the city council remotely by telephonic conferencing system. Some city employees will also be available to participate in the same manner.
First we'll have the agenda review session, approval of minutes, reported correspondence by city clerk, public hearings, ordinances on second reading. We have, one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, for right turn on red light prohibited. Then we have ordinances on first reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, for parking zones for handicapped persons. And two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 3, for fee schedule. We have resolutions one through 28. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sale certificates. Four, authorize purchase by fire department for turnout gear. Five, approve request for use of city property and street closure at Recreation Park. Six, approve request for street closing and sidewalk use at George Street between Albany and Byers. Seven, approve request for use of city property and street closing at Monument Square Park. Eight, approve request for use of city property at Alice Jennings, Archibald Park and Soccer Field. Nine, approve request for use of city sidewalk at Richardson and College Avenue. Ten, approve award of contract for psychological services for the police and fire department. Eleven, approve request for street closing at George between Albany and Byers. Twelve, approve resolution to provide police traffic control for milling of various city streets. Thirteen, authorized lease of coffee machine for tax collector. Fourteen, approve award of contract for appraiser services for abandoned properties project. Fifteen, approve award of contract for architectural services for abandoned properties project. Sixteen, authorized refund for, uh, to FIG custodian for 2021 taxes. Seventeen, authorized refund to Norman R. Carey for duplicate 2021 tax payment. Eighteen, authorized refund to Couch Bronzendorf Insurance Company, um, due to a duplicate 2021 tax payment. Nineteen, approve award of contract for books purchased from a wholesale distributor for the New Brunswick library. Twenty, release of site performance guarantee to Gilberto and Gabriel Mercado. Twenty-one, approve award of contract for traffic engineering design services. Twenty-two, approve amendment of resolution R dash 0620-20 with Esposito Construction. Twenty-three, approve amendment of resolution R dash 0220-49 with Esposito Construction LLC. Twenty-four, approve amendment of resolution R dash 052132 for maintenance and supportive city software. Twenty-five, approve resolution to authorize the city, um, to use CD BG funds. Twenty-six, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance, ordinance at the Lori Proton Therapy Center. Twenty-seven, authorize tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and utility accounts. Twenty-eight, advice and consent to Parks and Gardens Commission appointment of Aaron McGuire. Then we have items for discussion by council, OEM updates, public comments. The next meeting will take place on September 15th at 5:30. Um, the meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Additionally, a 48-hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on August 25th, 2021, as is required by law.
The city council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing a telecom, teleconferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call-in system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the 48-hour notice. During the portions of the meetings that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted. During the public comment period, those who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name, then called upon to speak one time and for no longer than five minutes during each public comment portion of the meeting. The timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired. Public meeting assistance accessed in the call-in number should call City Hall at 745-745-5007.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to pray for the souls of our fallen soldiers who lost their lives in Afghanistan, serving our country. Pray for their family members and friends, that they may find peace in their hearts. Thank you to all who sacrificed to serve our nation. Thank you.
Motion accepted, Ms.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. We have an ordinance for discussion on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Traffic Control Regulations.
I'm sorry, Council President, it's Michael Drews. Can I ask you just to pause for a moment? It seems that, uh, people on public one are having a hard time hearing. Can I ask you to pause for a moment, please?
Yes, of course.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Council President, we, um, we've contacted everyone on public one. They're moving to public two. Uh, if you could just give them, give them a moment to dial in, we'll be able to pick up again.
Sure, thank you.
I think we should have had a better system by now, come on.
Council President, we'll continue to monitor public one. If anyone else joins us, there, we'll direct them over to public two. Uh, I, I thank you very much for your patience, um, and I, at this point, I, I suggest that we start again with the beginning of the ordinance section.
Yes, I will. So, ordinances for discussion on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10.12.160, Schedule 18, Right Turn on Led, Red Prohibited, Add Remston Avenue and Sanford Street, Eastbound, Westbound, Northbound, and Southbound, Paul Robeson Boulevard and Georges Road, Northbound, Paul Robeson Boulevard and Sanford Street, Southbound and Eastbound.
Madam President.
Yes?
Um, I asked a question, uh, to get to the record of why not, uh, westbound? That would be Georges Road coming on to, making a right onto Paul Robeson Boulevard.
Mr. Valenti, do you have an answer for that?
Yes, uh, when we, uh, refer, when we designed the refurbishment for this, uh, traffic signal, uh, our traffic engineer, uh, the third-party traffic engineer, um, suggested that, that, um, would, um, allowing that to continue at that one location would, um, greatly impact the, um, the ability of a queue to form. In other words, that the queue would not form or a line of traffic. Uh, it was that, that third party's recommendation that we, uh, considered this amendment to the, uh, ordinance.
Thank you. So, at this time, we're preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to remind everyone who would like to speak, if you could please just dial star six to unmute yourself. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Again, please dial star six to unmute yourself. Letters A through D, E through H, I through L, M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T.
Gretchen Spencer.
Okay, Ms. Spencer. U through Z. Is there anyone, A through C, who wishes to address the council on this ordinance?
No.
This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance. The list is now closed.
Got everything? Okay.
Madam President, the first person on the list is Ms. Dan.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Ms. Moore, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
I'm gonna pick up CJ.
Please now star six, unmute yourself.
Hi, yes, can you hear me now?
Ms. Moore, can you? Yes, ma'am. Your, just your name, adre, and address for the record, please.
Danielle Moore, um, O-O-R-E, Somerset Street. Well, first thing I would say on this ordinance where I would just like to say, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for showing your concern on, on, on this, where I have to, this is true what Mr. Valenti's saying, whether something should slow the traffic down or not, where, honestly, I say that, that should be the situation, so what, you don't have, you would have less, less accidents and le- less injuries due to where, whether it'll slow the traffic down or not, due to where you have extremely too much speeding in New Brunswick, due to where the police department is not, not giving out too many speeding tickets, and it, it's getting outrageous with all of these accidents. But I do thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your concern. One thing I will say, thank you, it's good to start seeing things to be done, where I don't have to be the one to really, what, take action of, while seeing, seeing things and speak on it. It really, it, it's really good to see that, wow, someone is really speaking up where, like I said, I don't have to do the work, but I don't work for the city. I, I will thank you on that, 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 it's good to see. But, like I said, I still think that, wow, just because something is gonna clog up the traffic, I still think you ought to think about safety issues at first, due to where especially, all the kids will be going back to school. And that is a very, due to where you, I keep, kept saying, we need a double crossing guard over there, but I think you ought to look into what Mr. Anderson was saying as well, whether it'll slow the traffic or not, due to where school will be open before. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moore. Who's next on the list, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Gretchen S- Spencer.
Ms. Gretchen Spencer, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address?
Uh, Gretchen Spencer, um, at Two Jennings Court, New Brunswick, New Jersey. Um, I just came in on this, and I didn't hear the whole thing. So, I'm not sure, you talking about making left turns or whatever?
No, this is right turn prohibition on red light. These are new areas that are, that is being added to.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, 'cause we got one out here where I live at, but the traffic out here is unbelievable fast where I live at. Something needs to be done on the north side of town.
Okay. Ms. Spencer, this, this section of the meeting is just for comments relating to this, um, ordinance only, and you will have a time later for general public comment, okay?
Oh, okay, all right, dear, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No more members of the public on the list, Madam President.
Thank you. Need a motion? Someone want to move, move the ordinance?
Oh, move the ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
And I'll ask for Councilmember Egan. Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have ordinances on first reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicapped Persons, Add 7-4 Right Place.
Move the ordinance heading down Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, at 5:30, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 3, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.28, Fee Schedule, Section 3.28.090, for fees for land use procedures.
Move the ordinance heading down Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, at 5:30, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Is, it, can, Mr. Egan, are you with us? Councilman Egan, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to the resolutions. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolutions only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, can you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolution, please state your name when the appropriate letters of the alphabet are called. Please dial star six to unmute yourself. Letters A through Z, E through H, I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T. And U through Z. Is there anyone, A through Z, who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on the resolution. Please dial star six, unmute yourself.
I did dial star six three times. Can you hear me now?
Yes, Ms. Clerk, I have you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Marge Kerber.
Okay, Ms. Kerber.
I was having the same problem.
The list is now closed. Madam President, we have Ms. Marge Kerber on the list.
Thank you. Ms. Kerber, please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record.
Sure. Marge Kerber, K-E-R-B-E-R, Two Comstock Street.
Okay, which, which, uh, resolutions do you have questions on?
Fifteen.
Okay.
I'm, I'm wondering what the abandoned properties project is? Or where I can get information about it?
You can get information from that at the Department of Planning and, um, Economic Planning. Dan Dominguez, do you know Dan Dominguez? Mr. Dominguez? Can she call your office for, uh, information about this?
Absolutely. She can call 732-745-5050 tomorrow, and I'd be glad to talk to her about it.
Thank you very much. That's it to me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kerber. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Okay, Madam President, the next person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Mr. Cradaville, please state your name, spell your last name, and your address for the record.
Please dial star six, unmute yourself.
Hello, members of the council, Charles Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L. Live on Sedam Street here in the second ward.
Which resolutions, Mr. Cradaville?
Just wanted to make sure you could hear me. Yeah, um, so, I do wanna say at the top that it is concerning that it's been sixteen months and, you know, we still are, you know, having trouble working the phones here. Yeah, of course.
Okay, do you have any, anything about resolutions, of course, okay?
Yeah, so, uh, page three, number ten, uh, Psychological Services for Police and Fire. Um, I wanted to understand, uh, if these, um, you know, uh, professionals will have access to the Internal Affairs records for police?
Oh, I, uh, Captain Golduski, do you know, know that information? As far as I know, Ms., Mr. Cradaville, this particular resolution is just to have them on service. Um, this isn't, you know, but I don't know if he has that information. Captain Golduski?
Yes, I believe they would get access to, uh, whatever they needed to, uh, conduct any type of, uh, evaluation.
Okay, so it sounds like they could review Internal Affairs records if they were so inclined?
I, yeah, I, I don't know that for certain, but I prefer that to Deputy Director Miller and have him get back to you with, uh, definite answer.
Okay. I appreciate that, I'll look forward to that. Moving on to the bottom of this page, the milling of various streets. Can you just identify what streets?
Mr. Valenti, do you have a list of streets? The problem with identifying a, a specific order of streets here is that, you know, sometimes these projects get moved around, and then people start questioning why they weren't done that way. Um, I don't know, Mr. Valenti, if you're comfortable giving a, a list here?
Um, I don't have the list directly handed at the moment, but I can certainly follow up with an email tomorrow morning to Mr. Cradaville. But typically, they are local streets, they're not the main streets. Uh, a lot of our main streets are done through DOT, uh, local aid project. But I will certainly, um, be happy to provide a, a list of the proposed streets, uh, first thing tomorrow morning. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Valenti.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Um, can I understand who's paying for the police traffic control? Is this, uh, the, whoever's doing the milling, whatever vendor the city selected, that's gonna pay, or who's, who's paying the police? Um, specific to this project, this is, uh, as a just in case, if needed, um, currently, um, um, at the availability, and since living scenario project is near end, uh, at times, uh, Mr. Um, Detective the Bonus will be able to, um, supply one or two patrol officers, but if not, the extra duty is funded through the, um, the Public Works, um, capital program. So, that's really one department paying another department. Is that fair to say, that DPW is paying the police? That's only if needed, but yes, and that was the practice for many, many years. Okay. Uh, I'll move on to the, uh, abandoned properties, uh, resolutions, fourteen and fifteen. Um, I also was, was curious if, uh, you could identify which properties are gonna be the first ones, um, I believe, as part of this project?
Mr. Dominguez, do you have that information available?
Offhand, I do not, but I, I do believe that the city has already taken and is in the process of rehabbing at least three properties. Um, so this is, uh, just a continuation of the program.
Okay. Um, uh, I'll jump to the very last one, since I do wanna find out Ms. McGuire's appointment to the Parks and Gar-
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville, your time is expired.
My question was who, who she's replacing. Can you just tell me that?
Mr. Barron, do you know who Ms. McGuire is going to replace?
Uh, Madam President, I don't have that information in front of me, but I will follow up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cradaville, for your comments. Who's next on the list, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours. Ms. Moore?
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Go ahead.
Please, I hope you do get better technology, because this is getting outrageous due to where you have to press star six, the star six every time to be, to unmute yourself. Please, come on, update the system.
Do you have any comments related to the resolutions?
I, I will, but like I said, how you, you talk to certain people, like I said, your day will come, President, because it's getting outrageous how you, the way you talk to certain people, so nice and gently, and then how you work certain people.
Do you have any comments? This is for comments on the resolutions only, Ms. Moore.
I, I will. I will. Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Valently, please, due to where I do get around with these, with number twelve, with the milling of various streets. Is this related to where the streets that are being marked with that milling? For example, Ball Street, for this to be done with the white, and white writing on the streets? Is this the same thing that we're talking about here?
Yes, it is.
Due to where I have seen, I have seen plenty of writing, Power Street off of Joyce Comer, I believe it was also Delavan, including Ball Street over here off of Somerset Street and other places. But, okay, good to see. I still don't think, wow.
And just for, just for, just for clarification, this is not for the project itself. This is in case we need police extra duty.
Well, either way, like I said, I know, I know, like I said, wow, for you to get money, but pay money from the Department of Public Works, wow. To pay the police department, wow, I think that money should go to the workers who are really, really working. I'm very upset to hear that as well. Due to where, of course, is this one, how I can get a list for twenty-five, the resolution of twenty-five, due to where, with the flashing crosswalk devices, where they're gonna go? Maybe I give Mr. Valently a call tomorrow, or Dominguez a call, to get the exact locations on this?
Yeah, I, I can tell you in general, there's gonna be ten intersections near schools, specifically in school zones for pedestrian safety. And I think if you contact Mr. Valenti in the morning, he'd be happy to give you those locations.
Okay, and then the last one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment on number six, due to where, I know Mayor Cahill never got back to me, but, yes, it's very hurtful, due to where, like I said, certain things that he's doing, due to where he, I forget the artist's name, the one that does Juneteenth, due to where, I see this is another chalk art paint. How he told him, wow, we do not do anything with permanent paint. Oh, if I did, if I let him do it, I have to let do all, due to where the truth is coming about our sorry mayor, due to where, wow, I see with rainbow arch.
Rainbow dress.
Due to where it was permanent.
There's nothing that's been, these are not, that's not a permanent art picture. They were all done in chalk.
Let me, let me speak. No, they're not chalk. Leave me, and I'm an artist, and I know this well.
I'm clarifying, I'm clarifying your statement. This particular resolution is regarding chalk art. Speaking on the resolution.
You will have your day. I'm just tired of you interrupting me every, every time, due to where, let me finish talking. And like I said, you will have your day, Mrs. Socorro Ludwicks.
Ms. Moore, are you threatening me? I would just like to know, because you have continually, over a period of the past year, made aggressive statements towards me.
Stop interrupting me, and let me finish talking. Like I said, I told you, I don't have anything to threaten you.
I'm being very clear.
Well, good, please, because if you do get threatened-
Can we please, can we please mute this person? Can we please mute this person?
She's been muted.
Thank you. If she can, you know, if she can contain herself, she can come back later for more comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak on the resolutions only?
Madam President, we have one more person on the list. That's Ms. Linda Stork.
Thank you. Ms. Stork, can you please state your name and spell your last name? Give us your address for the record.
Linda Stork, S-T-O-R-K, South Park Boulevard. Okay, couple of questions here. Number sixteen. Is fifteen Reed, is that the apartment? And how does one go about getting their property exempt from property taxes?
Mr. Mulryne, do you have any information regarding this particular refund?
I'm sorry, which one was she discussing? Number sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah.
I can check with the collector. I believe this was the property that was not exempt last year. I want to say it was a church, but I will verify that. I know it was taken off the rolls for the 2021 year by the assessor. So, I can verify the exact information about the property, but that's how that happened.
So, it wasn't a church, but it turned into a church this year?
Again, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I remember some conversation about this property, but it was exempt this year. After being, it was taxable last year, though.
Okay. All right. The other one is the city software. I see you're thinking another fifty-three thousand into the city software. And I was so happy with the last big chunk of money when I asked about the tax, being able to pay taxes online. And I was told that would happen, and in fact, I did have a notice that I could pay my taxes online, but the fee was outrageous. So, never mind. I could buy a hundred, you know, envelopes and a hundred stamps for that. So, I mean, why should it cost that much? I don't understand. Nobody else, when you pay something online, charges that much. So, yeah, that kind of detracts them from the convenience. So, if I couldn't write, I might use it.
Do you have a comment relating to this resolution?
Yeah, I was just curious if it was-
Do you have a comment relating to this resolution?
Yeah, if it, if, if, if another fifty-three thousand dollars is gonna upgrade the system to where it wouldn't cost so much, I assume they're trying to cover costs because it's not efficient? I don't understand. Is there a specific on the decision for?
This is tech support for the entire city minus the police department. So, this is software tax, this is tech support.
All right. All right, okay, so, speaking of the police department, we're back to the overtime. It seems like everything needs, you know, everything needs to have-
What resolution?
Well, the one, the one that we were talking about is the milling.
Okay, that is in regards to the milling of the street?
Yes, right. But several others also mentioned that, you know, is that then overtime for the police? Or how does that, you said it gets paid out of public works? And it's only if necessary? How do they decide if it's necessary? And if people are gonna be paid to do that, they really need to be a little more proactive about being helpful, and not just go park there. And, like, that's just not that helpful. So, I mean, I guess the car is supposed to keep people from going and driving on top of the street that's being worked on? But then, maybe the officer could actually be doing something to, like, direct people where, you know, or help people out, like, where they could go, or how they could get around it. Something, I don't know. It doesn't seem like it's ever that helpful, and, but we see it a lot. So, I'm thinking that's a lot of extra money.
Do you have the comments on any other resolutions?
Yeah, the same thing with- Yeah, the same thing with the chalk art, you know, is another one, police extra duty. Well, what, just to keep people from, like, walking on the chalk art? Or, you know, driving into that street when it's being worked on?
No, I believe it's there for the safety of the people that are involved with it. It's for the safety of the people that are involved with the project.
So, people don't drive in there, right?
Well, yeah, if there are children there doing-
I mean, what, what would happen to?
If there are children there doing, if there are children there doing artwork, we need to protect them. Anybody there doing artwork, you know, through, on a project on our city streets, they need to be protected.
Okay. All right. All right, and how did, how did the-
Did any other comments?
Yes, number ten. How did the, how did the counseling work in the-
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stork. I don't believe we have the particulars of how the counseling works with this resolution. This is to pay for it. And I think the, if you have questions relating to the direct service, you can reach out to the police department via email for that, or the fire department, because this is both, not just one. Do we have anyone else on the list?
No, Madam President.
And how much time did Ms. Moore have left? If she'd like to come back on, if she had any, any questions relating?
One minute. One minute.
If she has any, okay. Ms. Moore, if you have any questions relating to the resolutions only, you have a minute and four seconds left. Star six to unmute.
I said you can enjoy that one minute and four, well, whatever, whatever was left on. You can enjoy it, President Socorro Ludwicks, because like I said, I'm tired of you thinking that I'm threatening you, and I'm tired of you to interrupt me.
Okay, that's enough. We have, this is on the resolutions only. I'm not gonna argue with this person in public to disrupt this meeting. We are here for the, to conduct city business and for the good of the public to hear, and I'm not gonna have these kind of interruptions, these unnecessary interruptions. So, we have no more speakers on the list?
Correct, Madam President.
Council President, this is Michael Drew. Quick question for your point, please.
Yes, of course.
Ms. Stork, she brought up a point about paying bills online. I wanted just to give her some information and clarify any confusion anyone else may have on the call. May I?
Of course.
So, if you were to pay your taxes online and use a credit card, then the cost to use a credit card is two point nine five total transaction, two point nine five percent in total transaction on the average. If you were to use an e-check or do a direct debit from your bank account, it's approximately a dollar and ninety-five cents for the transaction. So, the preferred, the cheaper way to do it is just to do an ACH or e-check, and only pay a dollar and ninety-five for the transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Drewless.
Move to resolutions.
Okay, thanks for that.
Take it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwicks.
Yes. Next, we'll move on to items for discussion by council. I have a few things that I want to address before I move to my fellow councilmates. The first thing is that, um, lost my notes. Just give me one second, please. Oh, okay, there we go. I just wanted to say congratulations to graduate students of the Leaders in Training Program, administered by YAP, and made possible through the Dev Coach and Cooley Competitive Edge Program. And the program was focused on community engagement surrounding issues such as food insecurity, social justice, and the importance of mental health awareness. This is a prime example of a joint stakeholder outreach to give back to the community and especially our youth. I also wanted to congratulate Council Vice President Escobar for her role and leadership as the Director of YAP, and for a successful graduation ceremony last night. Well done by all. Then I wanted to just make an announcement that tomorrow is the first Rutgers home game, and there will be watch parties throughout the city at places like The Yard on College Avenue and George Street. So, please come out and support the team while supporting our local businesses. Next, as you probably are all aware, we're in the midst of a storm with potential for flooding. So, please remain safe, and you'll hear more details from Director Rawls about what's going on in the city in a few minutes. Then next, I'm not prepared to make an announcement regarding a return date for in-person meetings, other than the fact that we continually reassess the evolving set of circumstances to ensure the safest transition at the most appropriate time. I encourage public participation through the telephonic system for our meetings, and remind everyone they can make an appointment if they need the services of anyone in City Hall. And lastly, I was advised by our Assistant City Administrator, Mr. Goldberg, that progress ensues with Solterra. There have been inspections and meetings with the MCIA and the President of the company, and we will continue to look at the details in the best interest of the community, but remain active in seeking a resolution. Those are the comments that I have for this evening. Council Vice President Escobar, do you have any comments?
No comments, but thank you for your words about the program. It was an excellent program for our kids.
Oh, it was wonderful. You did a great job. Councilman Anderson, do you have, Councilman Anderson, do you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
Just a shout out to all the trade unions working on the State Theater, the Cancer Center, and all the construction areas in New Brunswick. A reminder that students are back, both elementary, high school, are all coming back. Certainly, Rutgers is coming back, and welcome back the Rutgers students, faculty, and staff. Hopefully, they will be responsible enough. But again, be careful of all the pedestrians and the little kids around. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Egan, do you have any remarks this evening?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming, do you have any remarks?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Now, I'll ask Director Rawls for an OEM update.
Sure. Okay, with the remnants of Hurricane Ida upon us, the city of New Brunswick is preparing for potential flooding along the Raritan River. The current river forecast is predicting flooding to be lesser than that of Hurricane Irene, Sandy, and Floyd. The heaviest rainfall is expected later tonight between 7:00 PM and 3:00 AM. Please stay off the road tonight if possible. If you must drive, do not drive through flooded roadway. Regarding COVID vaccination continues to be the strongest defense against COVID-19. Free vaccination is available to anyone ages twelve and older. Vaccination locations can be found on the state health website, covid19 nj.gov/finder. Free COVID-19 testing every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the New Brunswick Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Seven Van Dyke Avenue. There is no appointments necessary for this location. Free COVID testing at Unity Square, 81 Remsen Avenue, every Tuesday from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. There is no appointment necessary for this location. The city continues to share update, updated information about COVID-19 on our website and social media. The COVID-19 Report Podcast.